Okay, welcome. Good afternoon. Thank you for being here for today's Lunch and Learn. My name is Lauren Williams. I'm a Delta Community Services Manager for the Columbia Public Library. On today's Lunch and Learn, we're going to be hearing from Presiding Boone County Commissioner Kip Kendrick. And today's Lunch and Learn is co-hosted by the library and the League of Women Voters of Columbia Boone County. And we have people attending both in the room here at the Friends Room and also on Zoom. So a couple of housekeeping items. If you are on Zoom and want to ask a question, we ask that you use the chat feature to ask those questions. And there is a dropdown menu where you can say you want to share that chat with everyone. Please select that so others can see what questions have been asked. We appreciate that. And then we're also going to be saving questions for the end of Kip's presentation. And for those of you in the room, for accessibility reasons, so that people on Zoom can hear what's being asked, I'll walk around with a microphone. If you raise your hand and have a question, and we will use that microphone. We're also recording today's presentation, so it will be available the next day or two on both the League's YouTube channel and the library's YouTube channel for future viewing. And I'd like to welcome Barbara Hoppe of the League of Women Voters of Columbia Boone County to say a few words and introduce our speaker.
Thank you, Lauren Williams and the Columbia Public Library for co-sponsoring our Lunch and Learn program. We're just pleased to have Kip Kendrick, Presiding Commissioner, Boone County Commissioner here today to give us an update on the Boone County planning process. And I wanted to just say a few words about Kip. He was elected in November 2022 and started January 2023 as Presiding Boone County Commissioner. And before that was our state representative for many years and many other things. Also has an undergrad degree from Columbia College. My husband remembers me from back then, and a graduate degree from MU. And he has an extensive bio on the commission website if you want to read more. But I wanted to say just a few words that when I first met Kip, it was before I ran for council, and Kip lived in the Stephen Benton neighborhood and was the president of the Neighborhood Association. Really very active, great ideas. Just seemed like a very bright, energetic, caring young man then. And he's still a bright, caring, and still a young man now. So I give you Kip Kendrick.
Yeah, that's right. You want me to go all this thing? Thank you. And thanks Barbara. I'll never forget, it was the shortly after your election, ran into you at Earth Day Downtown and got to congratulate you in person on your elections as City Council. Thanks for your service, your long service on City Council. Kind of where we are now in the master planning process. What we'll talk about for sure. It involves extensive collaboration, cooperation with our municipal partners, with our sister political subdivisions across Boone County. Because while this is, you know, the Boone County government, the Boone County Master Plan, we don't own this. This is all of our, this is our entire process. Every resident, everyone who lives here, but not only lives here, and those individuals who commute in, work here, have had a stay in the process, that they're having an important voice in what the future of Boone County looks like as well, hopefully we get moving here as well in the future. So I'm going to be here. Before I get started, I want to talk just a little bit, provide a few updates on kind of other county projects along the way. And they, some of them tie in well to the master planning process. And I'll get into PowerPoint, an in-depth PowerPoint that I'll kind of talk high level on and where we are, where we are currently with the master plan. Currently, there is a housing study that's being conducted as well, this is a countywide housing study. The city of Columbia was interested in renewing their housing study and Boone County Government and the Community Services Department stuff. And say, hey, what about, we look at this countywide, because we know that this isn't just a city of Columbia issue. It's a countywide issue on housing and lack of affordable housing. And we need to be looking at this as a countywide, really it's a state nationwide issue. But what can we do as far as countywide, working with our municipal partners and work within our planning department to address the issues of affordable housing? So there's currently our consultant for that, David Boston. Dr. Boston's in town this week. We've been having community meetings around Columbia. Will be in Hallsville tonight and Ashland tomorrow evening. There is a housing study survey that is online and available at our showmeboone.com website. That will be available through April 14th. We encourage all members of the public to participate in that, in the housing study. And it dovetails well. There's a reason why we're overlapping our master planning process with the housing study. As you'll, as we'll get to here pretty soon, they collide. There's a tremendous amount of overlap. ARPA Round Two decision, so we have Round Two decisions for our remaining ARPA, roughly about 6.5 million remaining in ARPA funds. It'll be announced, fingers crossed, we pretty much have the list finalized. But we're just running all of that through our external auditors, make sure that all of the projects are in compliance with the federal regulations as we deem. Need those outside eyes on it. So we should be announcing those decisions by its effect within the next couple of weeks. Solar regulations, last night we had a hearing in the commission chamber on, as part of our planning and zoning meeting, on solar adopting total regulations in Boone County. Was a good discussion. These, the solar regulations have been in the works for the last couple of years. And part of the reason why we're moving them forward now is, is a plan. We're, our idea, our plan is to adopt the regulations. We're going to make some tweaks to them based on public comment and feedback that we've received. I suspect that we're adopting those in late April, early May. And there is a, these are industrial solar regulations, so the larger industrial facilities. There is a planned development of a solar farm that is interested in seeing these regulations move forward. And the regulation strikes a good balance between how do we make sure to allow for industrial solar while also maintaining integrity of our rural communities as well as how do we make sure that we find that balance on your land use and habitat? And so we've, there are very detailed plans out there. We're very, I'm very cautious optimistic that we're going to see the Boone Stevens project move forward. The landowners in that are, in that area are in agreements to see it move forward. And, and so that'll likely be a 580 acre solar farm, 65 megawatts. And so that will be a very large development. So our plan is to move these regulations through so that they start moving through the planning process. And then about eight months from now, we're going to likely go back and take a look at the solar regulations, kind of what has worked on the planning side, what do we need to tweak to make sure that they know that we have a good, solid regulation moving forward. It's in very good shape right now. It's really about a year and a half in the process of developing. But we want to make sure that we can go back and look at a couple of aspects of it and see how it plays out. So senior property tax breeze off though, on the April 2nd ballot, that was passed. I'm happy to talk more about that, but wanted to let you know that we are, we have scheduled public hearings for April 18th here in the commission chamber, 1:30 PM. We will have, on April 25th, we will have, that's a Thursday, we will be in Hallsville City Hall for a public hearing at 1:30 PM. May 9th, we will be, sorry, May 2nd, Thursday, May 2nd, 1:30 PM. We will be in Centroya City Hall for a public hearing. May 9th, we will be in Ashland City Hall for a public hearing at 1:30 PM. We'll get a press release out about that information. The property tax, senior property tax breeze, half on the April ballot. And we continue to move forward. We've been, got a timeline here dating back to May 8, 2023, when the Senate 190 was truly green finally passed. Boone County and other counties, we will have to, we will not be able to implement a policy prior to the close of the legislative session, which is May 17, 2024. That has been our statement the entire time in working with legislative sponsors on getting some cleanup legislation through so that we, sort of counties across the state can, can get clarity, important clarity on aspects of it that were there potential loopholes in the bill. Not potential, there were, there were some drafting errors in the legislation. Those bills are moving forward well. They're going to exec out Senate Bill 756 out of the House Committee today. And I suspect it's very possible that it either passes in its current form or some minor tweaks and a conference committee, but we'll be watching it closely. We'll hold all the public hearings prior to that May 17 deadline and have a policy in the works. But a lot of that policy is going to depend on what that final legislation looks like. On, and like I said, we'll know that because legislative session comes to an end at 6:00 PM on May 17. So we'll kind of plug in those remaining variables in the policy. About 99% of this policy will be determined by state statute. There's going to be, I say 99%, probably about 90%. There's going to be about 10% that's really kind of left up to counties to find some flexibility. And so that's part of what is important about the public comment period and public hearings is so we can make sure that we dispel any misinformation that's been floating around out there. We've heard, we've heard we've dragged your feet. I can promise you that Boone County will be one, will be the 11th county to adopt a policy, implement a policy. But out of 114 counties, just to provide you a reference point. But of those counties who adopted to date, their base tax year will be 2024. Our base tax year will be 2024. So all of those other counties, the 100 other counties that have moved prior to us, they will, those senior citizens will not receive any tax benefit prior to any senior citizen receiving a tax benefit in Boone County. But I just want to make sure that that information gets out there. Like I said from the very beginning of this, we were going to be deliberate in how we approached this, but also push this forward at the same time. And that's what we've done. In fact, we put it on the April ballot prior to the cleanup legislation being passed. But we knew, we spoke with House leadership, we spoke with Senate leadership, we knew that there was an emphasis behind getting this cleanup legislation passed. We took a bit of a gamble, placed it on the ballot. And now we're going to move forward and implement it. We floated some ideas out there on the property tax, a potential means test at 300% of the assessed value that would cover 86% of the homes. It's very possible, we're not even, we don't include that because it's likely that that cleanup legislation is going to, is not going to allow us to do it. And we're going to certainly be within bounds of the state statute. And where there is flexibility, we'll take the public comments and we'll come up with a policy and implement a program that works for seniors and that works within Boone County and certainly within lines of state statute. One other thing I'll mention also is that we are kind of in the beginning phases of Greater Bonfim Watershed Program as well, Watershed Initiative. And this is really based on feedback that we've received from state regulators as well as EPA on just the current condition of Little Bonfim Watershed, Greater Bonfim Watershed. And so we're, this master plan is really going to tie in well to that Bonfim Watershed Initiative. That's an important watershed, obviously, that touches all of our, a lot of that land in Southern Boone County. So we'll make sure to keep everybody updated as that moves forward in the planning process. And so I'm going to get into the master plan, kind of talk about where we are to date and kind of what to expect moving forward. This first slide here will show you our partners. We, our main contracted consultant on this is the I5 Group. They bring in some wonderful subcontractors to be part of this process. A Lockmueller Group, St. Louis University, Biohabitats, Community Economic Development Solutions that really have developed expertise in areas that we need to make sure that we focus on, whether it be our natural areas, you know, growth and planning, whether it be the economic development side of a master plan, infrastructure issue that we, you know, have to go into a master planning process. And so we feel confident that we have a strong team of consultants helping us on it. But it is also a collaborative effort amongst the community members as well. We've had a survey that was part of that Phase 1 where we collected over 2,000 survey responses. We've had over 50 listening sessions throughout the county, several open houses to date. We have an advisory committee that is made up of approximately 20 community leaders across the county and a technical committee as well, that's really made up of a lot of our sister political subdivisions, especially on the utility side of things, to ensure that they have a seat at the table, that they are part of it, that they're listening, learning, but also more than anything, providing us feedback on their current capacity and future, future plans, future growth as well as the utilities play such a critical role in a master plan. And how do we, how do we anticipate, how do we plan for growth of the future? This is, it's been an excellent time for me to come in as Presiding Commissioner because, you know, here is our discovery report. Kind of that first stage is where it goes through existing conditions and the survey results and everything. This has been a wonderful resource to me so far in learning, just learning a lot about the history of growth in the county, how it's been planned for. And then really it's such a wonderful time for me to come in and listen and learn and kind of help figure out where we're going. And figure out where we're going comes from really listening, learning, and then leading. And that's where we are in the master planning process right now. So why update the master plan? So it's been 25 years since we updated the master plan. Our last master plan took place in 1996. A lot has happened, a lot has changed since then. A lot of technology updates as well, which we can, I'll kind of gloss over today. Our consultants will, in an online presentation, will get into it a bit more. But GIF, just the mapping capacity has updated tremendously and will help us, I believe, truly believe in a future master plan that becomes more targeted in certain areas. You know, how do we, how can we have some potential, you know, how can we use the GIF to the greatest extent possible to really look at mapping and how we develop land and what uses are there? And so this, the master plan is a guiding, it guides the principles for rezoning or plot conditionally used permits, for our land use or for our planning regulations. It's a policy document. This policy document will help us update our zoning and development regulations in the coming years. And so you really have to have this, kind of the master plan, kind of the vision of where the community expects to grow, how we expect to grow, and then take all of that and, you know, hopefully reach consensus, develop consensus in order to, to really start to anticipate, better anticipate growth and even encourage growth in areas of the county. The, this is kind of a look at the 1996, what kind of 1996 land use plan looked like. But the jurisdiction that is under our control in Boone County Government and are the master planning is certainly that unincorporated area of the county. Now, that's not to say that this master plan, we will certainly get into it. This master plan certainly, certainly requires the coordination, cooperation, collaboration with our municipal partners. We cannot, not to spoil it all, but the projected growth of Boone County, we cannot do it without, without important collaboration, cooperation with our municipalities. And certainly how they, how they zone, how they do development, and particularly likely the need for additional infill. Because we're really on that, we're really on the precipice. We'll get to it here in just a minute, but the master plan again, it's a, that policy document that's going to help us kind of refine our regulatory tool. It will also help guide the way for, it will be kind of that source document for more detailed plans. And Barbara and I were mentioning, talking about just a minute ago, the 2009 Northeast Area Plan, a collaborative, important collaboration between Boone County and the city of Columbia. And that, you know, that is a type of plan that will come about as a result of the master plan and will use that master plan as the source document. So the more detailed plans that we get, we'll eventually get into, you know, what's six full point down, the stormwater and watershed, the Greater Bonfim Watershed Initiative, that'll certainly be tied into the master plan. The housing study, how do we make sure that we have diverse and increase the diversity and supply of housing options across the county, which is going to be critical for the future development of the county? That's certainly tie in, and that's again, the reason why we're overlapping these two moving forward. Education, education is important. As those of you who've been in Boone County and Columbia for quite some time, you know that new schools within Columbia Public Schools will often drive growth. And so I am, I participate in a long-term, long-range facilities planning committee for the Columbia Public Schools. I'm an ex-official member of there, and part of the reason is, how does the future growth of CPS tie into the master plan? And how can we ensure that, you know, new schools, as they pop up, have adequate infrastructure, but then also adequate planning and zoning in and around those areas to accommodate more compact subdivisions and other, other services that are needed to cut down on travel time for the surrounding communities? So again, the existing conditions in the discovery report was, was the kind of concluded Phase 1. And we put spring and fall of 2023, we really got this document completed in winter of 2023. And then, you know, as we, as they were developing this, they were also moving forward, our resource management and our advisory teams were moving forward to the Phase 2, where we are right now, the growth analysis scenario planning. That will likely conclude sometime late spring, early summer, I suspect. And then into the summer, we will be, we will have kind of that first draft of that master plan for public consumption, public feedback, and then likely fall to winter 2024. We will have, we will incorporate all that feedback, have public hearings incorporate all that feedback before we adopt and refine the final master plan heading forward. Now, it is our intention that this master plan really be a living document. We do intend to have some built-in look backs. You know, we expect the master plan document will be good for the next 20 years. But we also want, you know, kind of benchmarks and five, you know, five to seven year look backs several times throughout the life of the master plan to make sure that we can keep it updated and it stays relevant as we move forward. As everybody knows now, lots changed over the last 25 years, 2025 years. A lot is going to change in the next 25 years, that is for certain. And change seems to be happening at a much more rapid pace. And so we need to make sure that we build into that master plan, you know, the look back periods that are keeping it updated. Before I go further, we will certainly have some upcoming listening sessions. We'll get a press release out about this soon, but we'll have April 03rd and 24th. We're going to have listening sessions based on kind of where we are with the growth planning and scenario planning at this point. And so more information will get out, get out about how to schedule time or to show up and provide feedback to our consultants or our resource management team on where we are so far. So what we've heard to date, again, all of it can be found at ourboone.com. If you go to ourboone.com, you'll be able to find this lovely document in an electronic form. You'll be able to find our virtual town halls, at least two town halls there that will be kind of part of, end of that Phase 1 as well as the most recent one that happened last week. Those will be available in their entirety that you can watch. You'll be able to sift through more data than you ever anticipated. You'll be able to sift through as far as Boone County, kind of where we are, where we've come. So I encourage you to check that out. You can also get signed up for additional updates there. But high level, what we've heard, are we at a tipping point as far as growth? Yes, we likely are. And we'll get into kind of where they kind of project population growth to be at here in just a minute. Strong areas of consensus in the 2,000 plus surveys and the hundreds of, you know, hundreds upon hundreds of individuals who participated in all the listening sessions. Boone County expects a balanced growth approach to this. And so, you know, it really depends on where you come from and what you, what amenities you desire. But it is a balanced growth approach that we consistently see across the board. And as I mentioned, you know, those needs vary in different parts of the county. And with the, with the blessing of GIS mapping and technology that is rapidly evolved, evolved since our last master plan, we expect a very, the ability to have a very detailed master plan moving forward. So some key issues that really popped up throughout the discovery report, constant feedback that we're hearing, the need for transportation. And we see this in our housing study as well, as well as, you know, other comprehensive plans that I've listened to recently is how do we reduce travel time for individuals? How do we increase, you know, transportation options, increase safety? Those are always important. Natural resources, we have a lot of natural resources, a lot of public lands across Boone County, whether the state parks, conservation areas. You know, the city of Columbia has an extensive park recreation department. So how do we make sure we preserve the natural habitat in sensitive areas? And reduce flood. We have a lot of water that flows through, whether it be the Missouri River or a lot of underwater, a lot of underwater, there are karst geographies that moves through it. Especially the southern Boone region. So there's a lot of, there are a lot of important waterways that come through Boone County. And how do we make sure we improve water quality? That's something that, that we really got dinged on by our consultants and our reporters is water quality. Whether it be, you know, the ongoing concerns the EPA has about the Hinkson or, you know, kind of the Greater Bonfim Watershed kind of popping, starting to pop up on radars. How do we make sure we protect our waterways moving forward? Is going to be critical to, to future inhabitants of the county. How do we maintain rural character? Growing up in rural Missouri, you know, Boone County is an anomaly right now, right? We've seen 70% of Missouri counties, they're seeing a decline in the population where deaths are exceeding birth. And, you know, in Boone County, that's not the case. We're growing. But also our small county, our small municipality in Boone County continue to grow as well and continue to, you know, to diversify their economies. And a lot of that has to do around, you know, the strong school districts. But you know, Boone County is really, how do we preserve the rural character for our unincorporated? How do we make sure to preserve the small town, you know, atmosphere and the small town pride that we see across Boone County while also anticipating likely pretty rapid growth in population over the next 20 to 30 years? Infrastructure utility needs, there's some, there's one thing that I appreciate now today more than before I entered this office is utility infrastructure sewer capacity. Sewer is very expensive to run. It is the most expensive utility to provide. And where you see sewer, you tend to see growth, where you see sewer capacity, you tend to see growth. And so our ability to keep pace, not only update our infrastructure needs, most of our, most of the utilities that are controlled in unincorporated Boone County are controlled by a sister political subdivision. We maintain the road infrastructure. And I talk a lot about gravel roads and the need to continue to improve gravel roads. But there are, there are a lot of infrastructure needs for existing infrastructure and future growth where infrastructure will continue to, to drive where development occurred. So growth projections, kind of projection one that our consultant came up with is more of the same, which sounds pretty mundane, but when you look at more of the same, what that means for us is like, whoa. Or the Americana, kind of where, kind of where counties are and, you know, similarly situated counties have kind of been trending in recent years as well. And so that gray line at the top is more of the same. The 2020 to 2022 growth rate in Boone County, which is very possible that we will see that trend just continue, especially if Boone County continues to diversify our economy. If you think about where we are now. Continues to diversify our economy, if you think about where we are now. Um to where we were in the year two thousand, you gotta remember, we were through a great recession. And I know it was difficult, but for the most part. Uh on a macro level, Boone County was somewhat, you know, insulated from the. I the largest hit of the Great Recession. And that was a very unstable economic time. For everyone, especially, you know, I mean, certainly in Boone County, for Boone County residents as well. Uh but we did not see the economic trends that other communities felt. Um since that time, it's just since the time of the the Great Recession. Wasn't that long ago, just a little. Over a decade ago, and I guess at that point, we've seen a continued diversification of our economy. Um and there are some, there are some startups that are no longer startups, they're large companies. And some startups now that are about the large companies in the near future. Uh and so, you know, we continue to expect. Um the job market to remain very hot. Uh in in uh in Boone County, and employment rates are in main very low. Uh well, are arguably low. Um and and for a continued influx of um of people moving here for more economic opportunities. Um now, I don't know, if we hit two hundred fifty two thousand people by twenty fifty or not. Or we kind of remain on that, kind of that Americana, the share of the US population growth. Um based on similarly situated areas probably has us at a lower end around two hundred and twenty thousand population by twenty fifty. Regardless, the those are both pretty significant increases in residents over the next um, you know, twenty five years. The, this is interesting because this really ties into our housing study, the need for a housing study now. More than ever, we should have done one a decade plus ago, but better late than never. Um the housing projections, so this is a very interesting trend that we're, you know, that that has been a national trend, that certainly is. Is continuing here in Boone County, is it's a projected um is. I took out this slide where it kind of talked about where we were, we were at uh three point three. Occupants um per housing unit, I believe in the, well, there you go, I'm sorry, I didn't think about it, it's right there. Three point three to nineteen sixty, you start to see that slowly declining, uh certainly with population. Uh with um with fewer births uh per household. Um you know, you see that trend continuing to decline now, at the at the can, if that. Trend is to continue, uh you know, we may be at roughly two to just a little over two. Occupants per household unit in uh in Boone County by twenty twenty fifty. And um if that rate continues, of course. Uh we're going to need to adjust our housing uh stock. Increasing it, also increasing the diversity of um of housing units to make sure that we don't. Uh gobble up all of our natural area, all of our undeveloped area very quickly. And this slide kind of shows you again, Boone County population, the housing projections, so. If you're looking at the high growth, so if we're at, you know, high growth of uh of individuals. And we're at uh low per uh per person per household. Uh you're looking at a high end of forty eight thousand new housing units needed by twenty fifty. Um or, you know, potentially if that trend of the. Per member per household doesn't slide, but we continue to see more of the same growth, likely around thirty seven thousand new housing units. Um on the, on the lower end of that, and so. We continue on the Americana approach, you're looking at around thirty two thousand new uh housing units to around twenty one thousand, twenty two thousand housing units. On the very lower end, and so as many as, you know, forty eight, forty nine thousand housing units, a lower end likely around twenty two thousand housing units. Uh in the next twenty five years here in Boone County, uh that is um. That's a lot, and uh you know. Our consultant, I I know it kind of. Bucks what we think anecdotally here in Boone County. But our consultant, their analysis, looking at similarly similarly situated counties as well as other counties. Across the region, Boone County has really. Done a a good job of not. Um of not sprawling too much. And I know that kind of goes anecdotally against what we see and what we've experienced living here, we think we've seen a lot of land get developed. But when you look, when you can take a step back, look at it from a thirty thousand foot view. Generally speaking, we have um, we have not. We have done a fairly good job of of growing in such a way that is relatively dense. Uh compared to our available land. And uh that's gonna be, you know, we're on that tipping point of growth. And that's again, where the coordination, collaboration, cooperation with our municipal partners is gonna be critical. To make sure that that growth just um that we are not sprawling uh pretty dramatically in the near future and that's um. We we've seen, kind of on that precipice, you've seen other areas uh of the state, you can take a look at like St. Louis County where. Um they were not quite ready and and just quickly gobbled up. Uh a lot of land and and really hard to come back in and do. Uh to do infill, so we're gonna have to be very mindful of that and and work collaboratively. Uh kind of Boone County job projections. Uh I don't want to get too far into this, but you know, as you would expect and as we're seeing. Professional scientific technical services are going to continue to expand and we're. We've really seen a lot of growth in um in technology driven areas, sectors. And there's reason to believe that we will continue to see this, um you know, the University. Of Missouri being a large driver and kind of their renewed effort on on getting, kind of what is being developed. Uh in labs, uh in in practical space are uh in in the in theory. Out quickly to um to production. And uh and the coordination there, it says even some of that production is happening here locally as well and so. Um but there are, there are quite a few. Companies that we thought were small a few years ago, the equipment share, right? Very possibly publicly traded company in in a matter of a few years, you've got uh patient, um you know, I don't know if you guys. Heard much about patient, Brian Worley's crew, they're getting ready to be a very large company, I'd expect in the next several decades plus. In Boone County and so others, and you know, that those are just two, two examples, just two example. Um and we're gonna continue to see uh job growth and and part of that. Part of that job growth is also our ability to anticipate um infrastructure needs and and to be able to actually recruit and retain because. We talk with with companies uh who are here that want to remain here. And their ability to grow, of course, is is partly based on their ability uh to be able to recruit and retain talent here locally. Um president counties, and so this is important for us to look at as far as president counties. Um how do we, how do we look at those similarly situated counties and so. You know, our consultants did a very good job, this is just a kind of a partial list of president counties that we've been looking at. As far as um kind of where they have, there is a population center. Uh kind of city center like we are, there are some metropolitan fringe areas for sure. But most of those similarly situated kind of look a lot like Boone County where. You know, there is a, there's a Columbia or, you know, there is a university that's often driving. Uh the economic driver of those areas and then an important part of that too is looking at the land cover. You know, what's, what's the percentage of the whole, what percentage of forest, percentage of ag land? Um and how do we, how do we look at their comprehensive plans? How do we look at their population changes in order to kind of pull some best practices on on the planning process? Um we really kind of narrowed it down, these president counties really kind of think, believe, show off some of the. Uh strongest indicators of of the very like. Likely situation, similarly situated counties, Dejounte County, Iowa, with the University of Iowa and Iowa City. Um you know, Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, with the University of Indiana. Green County, Missouri, which obviously has experienced some very rapid growth. Uh in recent years and uh. Uh Douglas County, which is the University of Kansas and Lawrence County, Kansas being their population center. Um you know, our goal, I think, is to uh is certainly always beat Lawrence, Kansas. Thousand to very similar situations as well. Um so again, as I mentioned prior to, you know, approximately eight thousand. Existing housing units in Boone County currently. Uh with the high likelihood, I think we're kind of engaging in probably a need for thirty seven thousand housing units. Kind of the uh keeping that population trend, but you know, assuming. Kind of falls in the middle of whether or not the household population drops off, continues at that decline. And kind of a balance between uh the Americana approach and and um continued as. Uh as we've seen over the last twenty years. That thirty seven thousand new housing units really kind of strikes up where we need to be. Um and so kind of what our consultants and our advisory technical committees are looking at. And what we're asking for public input on is, is what do these scenarios look like? Scenario one, kind of the current trend, which has been a lot of the city edge and rural states, and so there's been. There's been a lot of growth, I know, that everybody knows, kind of in Ashland, Hallville, some growth in Centralia. And certainly along the rim of uh of the city as well, how do we make sure? We'll talk about that, but i- if this kind of. This is kind of the current trend where we're seeing a lot of the growth in in those areas. A decent amount of infill, there I I shouldn't say there hasn't been a lot of infill. Uh there has been a good amount of infill. Um the scenario two, which um again, you can find our consultants who are. More into the weeds on the data than I am, will kind of talk about a scenario two A and B. Uh where it's more city focused development in the future. Um certainly not stopping or preventing uh development un- unincorporated, especially along the edges. Uh of the municipalities. Uh but how do we encourage and how do we work with our municipal partners on encouraging more land uh? Infill within uh within municipalities and how do we make sure to grow up? Uh and then, you know. Ensure that we can uh that we can develop along the fringes, along the edges of these municipalities and it's like a way to. Kind of allow for more density and better services. And then scenario three would be the rural group where uh it kind of takes on more that. Potentially that St. Louis County model of more, it just kind of growth. And in uh high development in in the rural areas. I suspect that that scenario number three is not the direction ahead, but it is one that would has to be explored. And is certainly kind of a scenario that could play out over time. I'm not going to get too far into this, uh cause there are, there's a lot up here and it's probably very difficult to see. Um Stephen, uh our, the consultant by five group does a very good job of of explaining. The scenarios, um scenario one, scenario uh option A, option B, kind of how that looks. And then scenario three, well, how that looked as far as providing those new housing units. And that total acre, total acre of land that is consumed as a result of that development. Of those new housing units and so. Um these are scenarios that are kind of playing out internally right now and. Uh they will certainly be bringing those forward more as it uh as they kind of work through what they look like. With a lot of the technical partners who will be part of it. Um. Evaluation, this is kind of where they are in the evaluation process and. Um again, I'm not gonna go too far into these slides because I want to open up for questions and comments. Uh but you'll be able to see all these slides on our website as well as the presentation where they kind of go into, you know, what is. What's the benefit or what provides the lowest benefit based on feedback that we've heard so far through the surveys, through the listings, I can through the open houses. On transportation, on production of natural resources, on housing availability and uh diversity of housing stock. On infrastructure needs. Uh both current and future infrastructure. And um part of that infrastructure, obviously, is how do you? Just the cost per home of infrastructure need before you even build that home, what's gonna be the cost of of building that housing unit uh? Uh depending on the lot size, because that's certainly something we will have control over. On Boone County government side, through our resource management department, uh setting up our living regulations. Economic development impact um of the different scenarios. Uh and rural character part of that as well, and so I'm again. I quickly breezed through those because I don't have the, I I'm still digesting. Uh the data that they presented us from last week, I was in transit back from Arizona from a site visit down there to Yalva Bay County. Uh the night of the event, so I've just been able to catch up online since then. Um again, we'll have two lifting sessions, April twenty third, April twenty fourth. Uh Tuesday and Wednesday, uh there will, there will be kind of all throughout Boone County, kind of. Listening session on where we're at and with that, I would certainly open up for questions.
Oh no, I'm just. I'm saying to suggest that maybe people could come up here, or we can walk around. Um my question has to do with the housing. Is there, I don't know what level that this has been taking place, but it seems like. We have an awfully lot of single family housing for. Family, we have a lot, awfully lot of. Multi fam, multi person housing for students. But is there any emphasis on increasing density by building more multifamily housing for rental? Or even condominiums, it seems like we have so few condominiums compared to other places.
There's certainly been the discussion in the master plan, that's certainly why we engaged with a consultant to help us on the uh on a housing study. It's because we have to increase diversity in our housing stock. I mean, that was clearly shown in uh in the slide that shows continued decrease in individuals living in our home. And the need for thirty seven thousand additional housing units, right? I mean, if we're, if we kind of can. If we continue on that current trend of what we're seeing on development and unincorporated Boone County. And we will certainly see some of that, but if we see kind of the larger, larger lots, larger homes versus two people. While not also increasing housing availability for whether it be accessible dwelling units. Condominiums, um you know, multifamily, uh you know, apartment condominium uh complexes. It's gonna have to be an across the board approach in how we increase housing diversity, uh because. It's um, we have to meet the needs and the needs haven't been met, a part of the, you know. The more you dive into it, the more you realize, the less you know of. It's just like the the the, what caused the. You know, the situation which we're in right now, Boone County, we're not, this is not unique, this is happening nationally, it's happening really globally. Especially in developed areas on just the lack of housing, lack of affordable housing. And I don't want to say with any one thing, but I think that we often underappreciate what the Great Recession did to ground. Uh how home development, housing development to a halt for really a year and a half to two years and um. And just catching up, certainly not, certainly not the only reason uh we are in the predicament that we're in right now. Um as I mentioned, I wish we would have done housing study, countywide housing study a decade plus ago. Uh it's better late than never, it's not gonna be, you know, trying to. You know, couch people's expectations on what this is going to produce, it's gonna produce paths forward. For us to start to begin to try to address this issue, we're not gonna solve this problem, but we have to, we have to be dedicated. Um to to address an issue, doing what we can, using the levers of government and looking internally. There are certainly, you know, developers who bring regulations, talks and say, hey, if. You know, you, we could use this nonconforming lot in different ways, then we could build more affordable housing units, which is within. Larger developments where, you know, homes are selling at, you know, five hundred plus thousand. We can use some of these nonconforming lots that on, you know, so. There is a good discussion, there has to be a good discussion of development community. Uh as well as others, what what regulations can we relax or what barriers can we remove? As well as what incentives can we create uh to increase housing diversity?
Would you, do you know the occupancy rate currently? Because, you know, you drive around Columbia and perhaps Columbia and the county is different. There are just apartment complexes in many, many places.
There there are a lot of vacancies, um I don't have that data, but I know we have that data and it is at our, it is um. You know, David has that data on the um on the occupancy rate and it's, it is um. It was, I I don't remember the exact numbers that I might throw out, it was higher than I thought it was. It was, and I, it was, it was a high, we have a, we have a higher unoccupied uh rate than I thought we did.
Yeah, when you talk about housing diversity, um.
Yeah, when you talk about housing diversity, um, are you, are you, uh, does that incorporate? Um, age demographics and gender demographics as, and, and that's how you're determining multi. Versus more dense, I, I'm thinking about, we moved here about four and a half years ago. And in looking for housing, we're retirees and we wanted to downsize and we wanted a smaller home. And what we were told is that people don't build smaller homes because it's not profitable, but that would be my assumption of what retirees. Would want to do, so when you're looking at the growth, and I worked on the census and a number of people told me, oh my God, the growth in this area over the last whatever number of years. And, and my thought was, well, is some of that growth retirees, is it students who stay here and go to work, I'm sure it's a mixture of it, but. I'm, my, I guess my question is, is all of that incorporated into these scenarios and the, and the numbers and where you're going with them?
Yeah, so it is certainly, it is not, um. It is not data like that's pulled out, but it, it's certainly, we're certainly looking at the trends of, of, uh, per person per household, right? And so that certainly reflected of a couple of different things, right, empty neighbors, there's, I mean, Columbia and Boone County is, is a good place to retire, if. We have to be deliberate and make sure it continues to be that way, um, so there, you know, I, I believe that, that part of that decrease. In population per household, not only just a decline in the population growth of, you know, of, of. People having children, but also, um, you know, older adults, empty neighbors who are moving to, to Boone County as a, as a place to live and retire. Um, and so that, that demographic trend, uh, that slide kind of captures the bigger. Uh, the bigger part of that, it doesn't plot age, but it does show a de- decrease of, of people per household. Uh, and so, um, you know, that's again. Part of the reason why we're running the housing study, uh, in conjunction with this. I imagine David on the housing side, he has a lot more data, the realtors, day realtors, as well as, you know, census. He, he had a tremendous amount of data just solely focused on how, I suspect he had kind of a breakdown of age on how.
So I have a question, you know, we're looking at, you know, important and immediate. Needs now and up to twenty fifty like housing for people. But, um, can you talk a little bit about the, the League of Women Voters is very concerned about climate change. And the effects on the population, um, now and certainly up to twenty fifty. So can you talk about how the, the plan, um, is also, I hopefully. Uh, taking into consideration and trying to address climate change in terms of housing, energy efficiency. Um, all those things that, you know, address the big pitch picture. Item that we have to consider and address.
Yeah, uh, so energy efficiency, I know will certainly be part of, at least for homes and, and new construction. Uh, and certain remodels depending on the level of, uh, of, of the project, the scope of the project. Will all be part of the, of our codes, um, and we're, we're currently on the. I, I didn't know this, I believe we've got to twenty, twenty eighteen, well, we may just still be on the twenty eighteen code. I know the twenty twenty-one code, they're coming now in the near future, um, sounds like twenty-one could already be out, but there is some tweaking that's happening there. In order to address some of the energy efficiency, uh, issues that, uh, that they were part of that twenty eighteen code, and so. Those codes tend to get adopted as they come out, they tend to get adopted by, uh, the cities, certainly City of Columbia. And then Boone County Resource Management, so those get addressed to, uh, codes. Now, on how kind of that scenario, can, climate change is kind of sprinkled throughout, um, this, and it's certainly. It will likely lead to changes or tie into the Climate Action Plan that the city has and. And any potential future, uh, Climate Action Plan in the county, whether or not we have, eventually have the authority to do that or not, how we develop that as the. As the master plan being the, the guiding document. The scenarios two, both A and B, kind of the, the more, uh, looking at kind of infill and, and really growing within. The confines of the municipality, um, there's a lot of. One could argue, right, I mean, where the infrastructure is already existing, the ability to, to be able to, you know, maintain the current. Road infrastructure, uh, sewer water, uh, fiber, all of the infrastructure needs that exist. And just growing up, uh, while also, you know, ensuring that there's greater density along the rings as we grow out as well. Will help, we could help mitigate, uh, and you know, something that I know David or housing, um, and our housing plans looking at as well as our master plan is. How do we? How do we create a master plan that allows for more mixed use in areas as well, so people have to drive less? Um, to, to get to what they need, whether it be groceries or, you know. Uh, school or, you know, their, um, their entertainment, and, you know, that. Certainly ties into climate change, reducing the need for longer range transportation, it also helps on reducing travel time, which. Is often tied to people's quality of life, that's something we found in the master plan and through the beginning of the housing plan. Planning conversation is the longer the, the commute time, the decrease of happiness of per- personal experiences, the decrease of quality of life that they. And the less likely they are to, uh, to be tied to that community for a longer term. Yeah.
Got time for one more question?
Just wondered if you could comment, uh, I saw reported that you recently toured, uh. Some tiny homes, stuff down Springfield, you know, we came here to exit for where. What's going on in, you know, Austin and where. Just creating, you know, it seems like those that are less fortunate, you know, they didn't, they can't afford typical housing. And some of the tiny homes aren't that cheap either, but they. Having a community where. You know, shared spades, kind of like the Ash Street Court or something, you know, you, you have a small, much smaller home. You know, like an apartment, I mean, like a hotel room for your entire domicile, but it's a place that they can lock up.
Yeah.
You know, um, any, I mean, any comments?
I was, I was blown away by what I saw in Springfield, um, and, uh, you know, Eden Village. Now, the, the individual who runs that came from Austin and he kind of saw what they were doing there on tiny homes. But he was also concerned with the size of their communities and how they just, they grew unsustainable large and he's kind of, he believes he's found this.
Well, they had to go way uptown.
Yeah, yeah, and so he believes the, the sweet spot is anywhere is a tiny home community of, on like, you know, you're looking at. Very high end of five acres, you know, typically down to two to three acres where you can have, um, you know, no more than, I believe, no more than forty-two is what he's.
Like a couple of blocks.
Yeah, yeah, and it's a very small area, now, it was a good, it was a good meeting that we had, I went with some city officials, I know. That, uh, we are in ongoing conversation of how can we find, uh, places to allow for this? Where are there, you know, utilities that are run that, that makes sense for individuals? Um, but the price point is coming down significantly, they had. Um, you know, at, at their very first development of Eaton Home, they're, one of their forty, um, you know, small home community. Uh, their, the total project cost was around three point six million, and that was pre-pandemic, they've actually brought the cost down now because. Of just cost savings that they've been able to, uh, produce, they're also starting to, uh, three D print. Their tiny homes as well, which is a tremendous upgrade and also like safety upgrade, these things are going to be PF or A. Um, so we have to think outside the box, like, we often get, and, and I say this as a, an elected official who, you know, the regulatory body reports up to me. Right, the resource management and certainly City of Columbia, you know, their, their planning department reports up as well. We need, um, our planning departments to be open to thinking differently about some of these things, to keep pace with the demand and with the. The changing environment they're experiencing, um, there are a lot of. Off effective ways that creative solutions we can come to if we're all, if we're willing to all work together on it.
So that concludes our lunch and learn program, thank you for. For me overview of what you're doing, thank you for your work, and everyone should keep involved. Um, in the process, I want to announce our next lunch and learn program is May eighth, um, it's on mental health. Uh, Carissa Kessler, Director of Crisis Services, Central, Central Region. For Bureau Behavioral Health will speak on behavioral crisis services in Missouri. And, um, I think Mari, Mari, our president, might moderate that because our mental health expert. Um, please, um, share this program with others and use Facebook and email because it was really very informative and excellent. And, um, a big process, thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.